All right, well, we want to call the meeting to order for October 12th, 2022. Let's start with the pledge.
Under leagious to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Warrant and bills have been signed. Motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Okay, we have an agenda. Minutes from the last meeting, have we?
Yep, I got them right here.
Great, thank you.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the minutes of October 5th.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Okay, we've got minutes. Town administrators report.
If you'd be so kind to let the fire department go first, I need to go get my list, I inadvertently forgot.
Great.
Trust that Wayne can talk long enough while I'm gone.
He's not right.
Good evening, I'm here just to provide an update, we took delivery of the power load stretcher system, it is installed in the ambulance and working just fine. That particular device is capable of lifting 700 pounds straight up, suspends in the air, and then that stretcher just gets pushed in, so I can literally do it with one finger. So it's a huge asset to our department and the people we have working for us, so that's all I've got for now.
Question, how long does it take for the whole motion, everything to work by the time?
Not long, just a few seconds. I could show it to you sometime, for sure.
Like 15 seconds, something like that?
Yeah, tops.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
Any, everyone wants to, an update on the fire truck, anything new or?
No, they're still working on it, I got a couple updated pictures, but they've just uh...
They haven't given us a delivery date yet?
Nothing yet, no.
Okay, fair enough.
As soon as I get it, I'll be here to let you know.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. While we're at it, are there any other department head reports?
Will Langley, District 1, Monday morning, we're going to stop putting sand up, even though it's going to rain this weekend, it's kind of, is what it is at this point. So Monday, we're going to need to stop putting sand up, Saturday morning, I'm going to meet Adam down there, we're just going to clean the shed up and everything, we just got some coal patch, we've got to move around and pile our salt up and everything, so we should be, hopefully next week, we'll have all the sand in, so.
What do you plan, how much plan are you putting in this year?
It's pretty dry, there's not much left in there, we're going to try for like 4,000 and leave you a good chunk open for our loaders and salt and whatnot, so that's what we're going to shoot for anyway, so.
Want me to do this?
Please do, you go right ahead, sir.
As you can see, on the agenda, you have to, you don't have to, but you need to re-sign the warrant this week. And I would make, like to make it very clear to everybody, especially out there in TV land, before Jennifer did the warrant and you guys signed it, she sent out an email and asking everybody to look at it, to make sure things were accurate. And I told her it was just fine, and I was wrong. I don't know why I didn't see the thing that was wrong, but I didn't. I just want to make it very clear that as chairman, I have a responsibility, just like everybody else does, and in no way, shape, or form was this the town clerk's fault.
Well, thank you for saying that, but it was nothing fatal, we were able to correct it tonight, so.
No.
That's great.
We're just happy we didn't print many ballots.
Yes.
But I just wanted to make sure that...
That's fine, Dennis.
And probably the next warrant, we'll have to do like we normally do, I'll have
to come in and sit down with you, in your office, to make sure everything's right when we're done. Thank you.
All right, Dennis. Any other reports? I don't think so. Okay, let's go back to the town administrator, Jennifer.
All right, just a few things, so we were scheduled tonight, if you recall, to have a general assistance public hearing, we chose a date a couple of weeks ago, but because of printing issues with the Waterville Reporter, we need to put that off, so we're going to reschedule it for 10/26, I skipped next week because of the other public hearing, so with your permission, we'll get it done for the 26th. Just FYI, I've been communicating with the town administrator in Shapley about the York County Sheriff's Department contract, as you recall, we last left it that we made all of the changes, both towns agreed to, we sent it to legal, they made some proposed changes, been over a month, so I sent an email to the city manager to see if there was an update, and he indicated that he has not had a chance to look at it yet, so we asked him to do that, so we'd have time to go back and forth if necessary.
So once that's done, we have to send it to the sheriff's, in order for them to review that?
The city manager is, they're the ones that agree to it, not so much the sheriff.
County.
County, I'm sorry, county, sorry, city county, yeah. Sorry, county manager, yeah.
Okay, I thought you were talking about Shapley, okay.
So anyway, so hopefully he'll look at that soon, Shapley's having a special time meeting to try to get approval to sign it, so.
Okay.
We'll see what happens. In your packets underneath your agenda, you should have an AA Northern New England, the senior drivers workshop, so Sheriff King reached out to us, he's got a former employee that you might remember, Tom Barron, who is now doing some education on the side and his new position, and they've offered to host a free class, essentially it's Keeping the Keys, is a workshop designed to help keep senior drivers on the road and safely as, safely as possible, for as long as possible, it's an hour class, there's no fee, Shapley would like to join in with that, and they don't really have the space, so we would hold it here with your approval, and just see if anybody's interested in attending, it's free.
I think it's great, how long is it, by the way, do you know?
One hour.
That's great.
Okay.
So how do we get the word out?
So once we pick a date, we'll get it on the same places, the website, Facebook, cable, maybe we can announce it at a meeting or two.
Yeah.
Maybe announce it at the church, try to find some places to reach out.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Next, I just wanted to let you know that the, remember you signed the agreement or you agreed to Dan Crampset working on the website RFP?
Yes.
So he has sent me a draft of that, so we're going back and forth on...
A draft of?
The RFP.
The RFP, or the contract, if you will, is it a contract?
Well, it's an RFP, so people can, they can actually bid on the new town website.
Oh, okay, so he's going to manage that, okay.
Yeah, he's got it.
He's all the same.
Right, but he sent it to me to review the draft, and a couple of changes, and hopefully we'll have it due next week to look at, so we can get it out, and we're hoping that's going to be a good winter project, getting a new website.
Good.
Lastly, if you haven't been to the clerk's office, there is a big box there that is calling for candy cravings for the Act in Elementary School Trick or Trunk, or Trunk or Treat, or...
Trunk or Treat.
So they look for, poor toddlers look confused, they look for bags of candy donations every year, they put a big box out there, so if anybody wants to pick up a bag of candy, we like to have ours filled and send it off to the school.
Okay, great.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, liaison updates. Well, I think my activity has primarily been with the, well, actually two, Transfer Station had an opportunity to talk to Robin, we're gonna, he's going to come forward and talk to you, Jennifer, about some capital work he'd like to do down there, he has some estimates, and so that we can get that in a shape that we can bring it forward here to discuss it and provide some direction to, to the Transfer Station on the feasibility of some of those things, and if there may be something we'd like to do immediately, if there is available funding, but probably most of this will end up on a warrant if there's an interest in it, so just to let you know, that's being worked on, you're working on that, Robin, with Will, so the two are collaborating on developing estimates. And the only other thing is, we had a meeting of the Fire Chief Search Committee, and we're going to be talking about that a little later on in executive session.
All right, so I'm next, let's see here, school, I haven't been to a meeting yet, APAT, haven't heard anything, cemetery committee, we're going to have a meeting in December?
Number six.
They moved it, so I won't have anything until December on the cemetery, rec committee, I haven't really talked to Sam this week, so things have been quiet there, too.
All the teachers have been in, she's been turning in the money, everything's, just housekeeping on our end.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Roads, no update, enforcement. Stay out of that one, no update for that, I don't have any updates.
Okay.
Don't forget the pumpkin carving date.
Oh, yeah, his was, was, yeah.
23rd?
Yeah.
Okay, on to old business, the town hall water bid.
You do have a meeting with him next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday, this is someone who has suggested an alternative approach to the, addressing the water problem in the town.
Quarter of the fee, yeah.
Quarter of the fee, I haven't seen the details on it yet, but, so I'm going to chat with him, and we'll see where that takes us, and we'll be able to talk about that at our, hopefully our, it's going to be Wednesday in the afternoon, or morning?
Ten a.m.
Ten a.m., great, so we can, I'll hopefully have something to share with you Wednesday night, we can talk about where to take this and try to move this forward. Resign the warrant, so I have one here.
The original, yeah.
Yeah, so we just want...
One of the recommendations, there was an error on, so that's been corrected, so just need a motion to sign.
What's changed here, Jennifer?
The very last one, the Warren and Finance recommendation, I inadvertently typed five to one on the lighting, and I was folding ballots, folding ballots, I said, gosh, I wonder which one of those Warren and Finance Committee members voted against that, so I went and watched the tape and said, oh, none of them, so I called Dennis, and, because it just, based on the topic, and I didn't think that that would be an issue, so it just kind of worked itself out, luckily within the first 50 foldings. So that's the only change. Do you need a motion to sign the amended warrant?
Okay. We'll make a motion to assign the amended warrant.
Second that.
All those in favor? Okay, I don't think there's any need for discussion on that, so we've already had it, thank you. Kim? Jennifer, I understand you have something to report.
I do, thank you, Adam Doliber, Dave Winchell has worked on this, we have the letter from Mr. Gagnon that has been signed, it's not as fresh as it was, but that's okay, it's been signed, it witnessed, so now we just need the board to sign it, and we'll file it away, this is...
No motion necessary, just sign.
Yeah, anytime you sign, we should have a motion.
Okay.
Motion to sign the agreement for the new bridge, I think there's a map and lot in there, Kim?
Okay, that's wonderful. Make a motion to assign the, to sign the agreement on a certain real estate on New Bridge Road, okay, let's see here, book 18895 and page 689.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. What is today's date?
Thank you.
Yeah, D, we've, we're going to skip D because we've already taken care of it, so we don't need to...
It's resolved, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, it's been resolved, so we're all set there. Facility assessment RFP.
So last week it was handed out?
Yeah.
You all have a copy, just in case you didn't bring yours?
Yeah. So, let me give a little background on this, this was a, an item came forward from the Capitol Planning Committee to engage a firm, I guess they're an engineering firm, that would come in and perform an assessment of certain town buildings, and what I've done here is I've, I've taken, in the purpose of that assessment, let me give you a little more, purpose of the assessment is to really look at the facilities and just determine what the state of repair or disrepair might be, what the cost of, the extent to which is any deferred maintenance, which is basically when you've let something go beyond its useful life, like a roof, a plumbing system, or whatever, if we have components of our facilities that have exceeded their useful life, you know, assigning useful life is not a precise science, it's an estimation, but it is something you need to keep an eye on, because when something's supposed to have a useful life of 30 years and it's gone 40, you may be taking more of a risk, depending on what that item is, than you want to take. So this is an assessment that will provide us information, that will look at our buildings, componentize them, the roofs, the foundations, the wiring, the walls, even the interior, and give us a sense of the state of repair, and what should we be thinking about in terms of putting aside ongoing funding so that we can maintain our buildings in an appropriate way, and how that's maintained, at what level, those are all things that we get to decide as a town, it's not something that anyone's going to prescribe for us, but it will give us the information to, to make some of those decisions, and to pick an appropriate funding level that, in my estimation, is best to put aside systematically, so that you aren't dealing with a large issue all at once and need to fund it. The idea is put the money aside on a regular basis, so that when these things go beyond their useful life and they, they actually need repair, you've got the money to do it. So this assessment is to provide that information, and they will provide all kinds of reams of data around this, so I think we'll, it's money well spent, so I, I went on the web and I looked at firms that do this, to try to get a sense of how they do it, what the, what the information is they need, and what information they provide, and I put together this RFP, this draft of a scope of work, this is not the total RFP, this is simply defining what it is we want them to do for us, so that's what this document does. If we like this, then Jennifer would take this and wrap it into a standard RFP form that the town would use, and we would send that out to vendors, that we would identify that, and ask them to submit a proposal to do this work. That's my take on it.
And it's actually, depending on what you decide to do, I already did the beginning and end, so it's...
It's already in there, yeah, yeah.
The only thing, if, we would need to just change the date in the end, because that was, I put November 2nd, that's probably not soon enough.
Do we have to make, we don't have to make a motion or anything, just make a decision? I, I think it looks good, I, you know, I'm excited about this.
I want to make a decision on this, well, I can make it next week if we have a, I want to make sure I go through this, I just want to make sure that we leave the door open for having them, I see assessment, I want to make sure that we have, because I think what we ought to be doing is hiring an engineering company that we work with all the time.
I would agree with you on that.
Because the, you, how do I put it, okay, you want to know what you're paying for, putting this stuff out to bid, getting a low bid on an engineer is not always a good idea, so what you do is you find a reputable company that can do an assessment on these buildings, but at the same time, we've got a parking lot to build, we've got two parking lots to build, we also possible to have some stuff up to the transfer station, so I want to just make sure before we, we reassign this, that everything's in there that I want, meaning the verbiage for, you know, because whoever we decide to, to pick for this should be able to do multiple tasks for us.
It's not typically the way it, these firms do it.
Well, depends, depends what you're doing an assessment on, I mean, if you have someone coming in to do an architectural assessment, okay, but that person's not going to be able to do an assessment on the, the parking lot, you know?
They, they're...
You might be asking for two different things.
I, I, if, if you see that in here, then we ought to talk about that.
That's why I just want to make sure I go through the whole thing, make sure...
I personally think the town should have a relationship with an engineer, so that we can, when we have something that needs to be done, we got somebody that's already been vetted, if we have it, it's been, the money's been appropriate, we ought to be able to just work with that.
The issues that we're having by not having an engineer, because typically back in the day, we just go and do it ourselves, you know, whoever the road commission was at the point in time, dah 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 dah, but now that we're putting stuff out to bid, it, I'm not going to go up there and lay it all out, draw up an RFP for something, because, you know, at the end of the day, any company that's going to come and bid on any of these properties has to have the same exact information as the next company, so it has to come in a big bid package, it should come with an engineer, so the people can look at grades, slopes, fill, you know, cuts, all that.
This firm is not doing that.
No, I know, but, but, well, I agreed when we signed on to put this on the warrant, that for, for me to agree to this, that we were going to take any money that was left over, that's to use it for engineering, for other stuff, so I want, I want, I want an engineer for that now, just, I think that's more important than this, okay?
Well, I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time, so we can do both, both of them, and so I, personally, I agree with you, we ought to have an engineer, you know, provide information so that we can decide what we want to do with the parking lot, what we want to do, as you said, the rec field, what we want to do down the transfer station, I think we ought to have a relationship with a firm that can do that work.
We should have an engineer, just like we have our town lawyer.
I couldn't agree more.
So, because, or we shouldn't be jumping from one firm to another firm.
This is substantially different than that, is all I'm saying, David, and I know you want to see money available for what you want done, the engineer, but this warrant was really, in my view, the spirit of it was to support this work, and if there's something left over and we can use it, great, let's, yeah, that makes sense?
Oh, yeah, it makes total sense.
Good, so you want to look at this some more, or you...
I'd like to take, just take a little bit.
Okay, let's put it on the agenda for next week, let's share it with...
Well, I was going to ask you guys that, are we, well, next week, are we having, are we having agenda items with the public hearing?
I, I don't think we got time to do both.
Probably not, well, we'll have to do it the following, he's, he would like more time to review it, so, respect that, so it'll have to be two weeks.
And we typically, that's what we, we talk more doing anyways.
This is, the timing on this is fine, I don't see an issue.
We'd really like to have this done in the spring anyways, right?
No, they can do it anytime, I mean, the winter, they're really looking at the building, so, you know, I don't, it's not like we've got a huge site infrastructure here in the town, you know, I mean, we've got some parking lots and, and, but, there really isn't much in the way of, it's not like we've got underground utilities, that best of my knowledge, we don't, which typically they would be assessing, and the wintertime may be a problem with that, so, but I still think we can get this done, you know, maybe late November, we could probably, you know, have this moving and get somebody engaged. Joyce, how long are they, do they take to actually do this work, it's, a week it's done, right?
A week to 10 days it's done.
Yeah, so it's not, it, you know, that's my...
It's not a big ordeal.
Huh?
It's not a big ordeal.
Yeah, okay, great, so we'll put it on our next agenda when we have items for the agenda. Any comment on that, before we move on? Joyce?
Thank you, yeah, if capital improvement could see a copy of what you've put together, we would appreciate it, and if I might say, I didn't before, we have actually changed our next meetings, and so people in TV land, as Dennis called it, November 1st is going to be our October meeting, it's going to be November 1st.
There you go.
Oh, thanks, and then our November meeting will be the 29th of November.
Okay. You bet.
I got to make some changes, I can email it to you.
Oh, okay, fine, then, Joyce, she's going to make some changes, she'll email it to you, so, yeah, why don't we, so we don't have incorrect versions floating around.
There's a couple of typos I've circled, so I just want to...
Okay, thank you. Grant writer, you want to handle this, you want me to, or?
Well, I can start it, you can take over, so one of the things that came up with Westshore Drive, more than once, we've heard many members and a couple of people from the public mention this stream crossing grant that we've all heard about from, from the state of Maine. So we did a little research into the timeline of the grant, and Tom and I had a conversation about grant writing and who would be best suited to do that, so we put out an email to our main town city clerks association and asked neighboring towns, you know, who writes their grants, and what do they do, and so forth, and Tom, will let you explain the best fit that we got back, and see what the board feels.
We got a response from someone who is a, the financial officer for the Portland Fire Department, it's a $20 million budget, very substantial organization, he handles all their finances, but also their grants, he contacted Jennifer, expressed an interest in, you know, this kind of work, we spoke to him briefly on the phone today, he had already looked at the grant program and understood what was necessary to get it done, and so we, I think today, we'd like to consider hiring some, hiring this individual, he seemed very competent and qualified, it's going to be on an hourly basis, we'll pay to get the job done an hourly, or until we decide he's not quite right for us, but I think it's going to be perhaps 10 hours at $50 an hour, so this is, you know, otherwise Jennifer's going to have to write the grant, and...
Yeah, no.
Right now, she's got a lot going on, so this seemed like a great solution.
We talked about this many, many moons ago, back when...
Yeah, this is something I really wanted to find.
Back when I was road commissioner, we talked about it, and we couldn't figure out, you know, who was going to do it, who was qualified to do it, and, you know, we know Leslie, she, she said she would do it, but I think at this point in time, when we, when we start looking to do these grants, I think we should have someone, that's what their job, that's what they do, you know, that way there, we're not putting it all on the road committee, or whatever, of course, if it doesn't happen, you know, we can't say, oh, gee, you're going to do it right, you know, we have somebody that, that's, you know, it doesn't mean we're going to get the grant, but I think from now on, we should be allocating these projects to other people that...
Have experience.
If this guy works out, he's already expressed an interest in trying to do this as sort of a sideline, so this would be his first engagement, so, and so, who knows, maybe we keep him, if not, we will find somebody else to do the next one.
I think it's a good experiment, you know, and if we could spend $500, $600 to get $125,000, I think that's pretty short change, that's been in the buying lottery ticket, so...
Yeah, we need a motion for this, Jennifer?
Um...
It's small dollars.
Yeah, well, I mean, we don't have an exact amount, so as long as we have a full, full board support to move forward with having him start on it, okay, I think that'll be good, we'll announce his name and all that next week.
Nodding heads, so I think you're all set.
Okay.
Okay, we've got an executive session that we need to move on, forward to, but let's review the announcements, although I am curious, what's happening with the roof replacement? I guess it's 10/21 they're scheduled.
Yeah, so the material, since you all emailed, the material is back ordered, but it looks like the 21st is when they're going to start now, waiting for the middle.
What was the original?
Thank you.
The 11th or 12th.
Thank you. Okay, and I guess I skipped over public comment, so let's open it up, any comments from anyone?
This is just a comment on the grant, so you got, so you're applying for the stream crossing grant, right? So that's, so if we don't put like a stream crossing tug culvert in Westshore Drive, you're, you know, and we get the grant, are you going to just, you're going to just give the money back, right?
So at the end of the day, the grant, like, I think Leslie explained to us last time there, that we, we apply for it, we get the grant, if we can't use it, then we just let it go back, but if we can use it, we're going to try.
Right, right, no, I just, I just want to make sure that...
We're going to apply for it, and, you know, see what happens, I mean, if we don't apply for it.
This grant application is due November 10th, and what we've asked this individual, if he's engaged, and he will be, one of his first things to do is to understand and talk to someone in the state, do we have to have made a selection on exactly what kind of bridge we want to build, or can we share an engineering report that has three options and make it very clear, obviously, that no matter what we do, it's going to comply with all the environmental and impermaning requirements, and, so he's going to check that out, and, and if we need to make one, I don't, I don't know that we...
What you do is, okay, so say the, the grant says, okay, you have to have one that has an open bottom, whatever, the in kind wouldn't, you know, wouldn't...
Qualify.
Qualify, thank you, so what you do is, okay, we'll take number two, okay?
Okay.
Do the grant as we're doing number two, if that's what we have qualified, okay? And if we decide not to go number two, then the grant, obviously, will go to somebody else afterwards.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think that's really the only way you could do it, and, you know, proceed with, with it.
We're hoping, Will, that, one of the things we said to him today is, one of the first things we want him to do is to find out which one, if any, or all three, he can apply for in the grant, so that they're not having to, since you guys haven't decided yet.
It may be that the in-kind you can't apply for, but he would look into that and just confirm that first.
Well, you know, 'cause we're early stages of this, we don't know where we're rolling with this, so, but we don't wanna make it so we can't apply for the grant.
Yeah.
So what you do is, okay, well...
Apply for what you can.
Bang, apply for what you can, if we don't go that route, here's what it is.
Okay.
And we could also, at the end of the day, we can make our decision, if we do get that grant, then say, well, there's a good reason why we ought to go with this one.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comment? Okay. Announcements? Would someone like to handle the announcements?
October 19th, we've got a select board meeting, public airing, on West Shore Drive at 6:00 PM. On the 20th, we have a planning board meeting at 6:00. 24th, we have a road committee meeting at 6:00 PM. On the 26th, another select board meeting at 6:00 PM, and on the 30th, we have a recreational committee at 9:00 AM. And then we have the pumpkin carving on the 23rd. Do we know what time that is, Virginia?
2:00.
2:00 on the 23rd, at Mary Grant.
Okay. I think we now would like to, a motion to move into executive session?
Make a motion, we go into executive session, MRSA 405-6A-1, personnel.
I'll second that.
All in favor? There may, well, you're welcome to stick around and, thank you. So if you have a motion to come back into general session?
Take a motion, come out of the executive session...
Has paperwork?
Open up the general session, yeah.
MRSA 405-6A-1, personnel.
I'll second that.